I'm gonna go ahead and start there, that way people can tune in when they get the notification. How's it going?
How are you, Ann?
How are you, Ann?
Good.
Ready to go, yeah, ready to go, go ahead. Run.
Alright, we'll go ahead and get started with it. I'm gonna start off by like kinda going over what we did last year. Some of the stuff I'll add to it when I get to three again. Uh, start accomplishments, we reestablished RV compound, which we did earlier in the year. We put together the advisor committee with three snowbirds and two full-time residents. Uh, the question came up, can snowbirds sit on the board? According to the districts, they cannot sit on the board because um, they're not here full-time. And plus, why it was done that way, I imagine is because um, there's a lot of committees, there's, and you gotta be a liaison for that, and you gotta be there for that. There's things that, as far as what I've learned this last year is that I need more board members to get involved with things. In that way, I mean, as far as doing things go. So, as you notice, the last six weeks, we've not had a town hall meeting. And I took a step back to maybe refresh myself on some things and uh, to refresh myself personally, because I was kinda getting burned out on things. But um, I'm back now, uh, I'm seeing a lot of things. If people don't know me, they realize that most of the time I spend the majority of the week in the office. I don't have other things, don't really do a lot of other things during the week. Because there's a lot of things that need to be like um, signed off on, or be discussed, and there'll be certain problems that come up. And I may need to see and pull it works out to take a look at. Or uh, something might come up up here, or something may come up at the office that needs, that needs something. It's not uh, I was given a letter yesterday that an email said, well, you voted to do away with the CEO title. I'll address that issue right away. Well, I understand that part. As far as me, I agree with that, everything. And I voted for it, or voted for it to be on the ballot as well. The only thing that really affects is where I can't make a neutralized or decision on things. The question came up last night if I'd signed a, or yesterday had signed an agreement with the county to bring in sheriffs to look at the roads or patrol service. First thing I'll do is, I'll say that I never did that. It was not, it was a recommendation, or not a recommendation, an option. If what we're going to try with speeding park, if it doesn't do any good, then that may be an option down the road. But you gotta think about, you gotta get the streets certified, I mean the, the signs certified. It doesn't mean that the roads have to be um, certain width or anything like that. It just means that the signs have to be at the code, like stop sign has to be thirty-six inches. The, the sign for the curb needs to be a certain, a certain, breathe a certain way and has to be a certain distance from the curb, that's what that means. And the county said that they wouldn't, actually didn't have a manpower to certify our roads because we got so many of them. So we had to get a private firm. Well, to let everybody know that I've got the advisor committee just looking to gather an information. What the cost would be and all kinds of stuff, that don't mean it's gonna happen. Um, I wanna clear that up, because that's going around, that, that um, we're gonna do away with the guard shack and all kinds of stuff, I don't know where people's getting this from. Um, but that's not gonna happen. Uh, let's see, the other thing here I got is, let's see, we had the health committee last year. And I think it's been suspended now, but it was main primary had to do with COVID. They were the ones that helped make, well then, plus me, plus a few members of the board agreed that we'd put a mask mandate in place last year, which was in, I guess, August and September. And I think it was August and September, maybe the first little bit of October. And um, we noticed that um, we gave like the entertainment committees, like, there was an option out on it. As far as they were like, if they were eating something, they didn't have to wear a mask. So, but still their responsibility to like now, even now, even though we don't have a mask mandate in place anymore, is still their responsibility to like, inform the people that come to the shows and that kind of thing if they have like, if they have a problem being there with so many people not wearing a mask, then they have the option of not showing up, they have the option to wear a mask themselves. To make the personal responsibility. And that's where we're standing in the fifth now. And I'm not going to put, somebody's asking me about a mask mandate again, I said, no, not gonna do that. Um, because if you don't have the, if you need to take the personal responsibility. So if you've not had the vaccine or anything, you know not, you know not to go nowhere. Or, you know, the big causes yourself and things, so. That's basically, and I will say, at the time, that the Delta virus is going around, at the time we put the mask mandate in place, and the figures were like close to twenty-two percent, this kind of thing, and it went down before the O-Crom, Crom, I don't know how to pronounce that word. But it came out, and it's less, according to everything we've read, it's less, I guess lethal, you should say. Um, let's see, the other stuff we completed this last year. We repaired the floor in the guard shack, that was nasty stink carpet. We replaced it with a waterproof laminate, I believe it is. And um, it's also, I think the guard shack's been painted, other things on the inside. Because I wouldn't wanna smell that mold and that, that wet carpet all the time. Let's see, we purchased new computers, because all of them had like Windows Seven on them at the time, except for two of them, and Windows Ten. Windows Seven was not supported no more by, by the Microsoft. We still, and we updated software. But we still have a problem with access program, because it doesn't really update. It's got, it's old, outdated, they're still looking for a program to replace it. For, and last year we thought that having gate centering here as a, to give a presentation and that kind of stuff, might solve that problem. And they're still thinking that, some of the ones here are still thinking that's, that's a possibility. But the problem you have with it is, we have so many residents that don't have a computer, that don't have a smartphone, because you'd have to use a smartphone to make a list of, like whoever you want to come in at the gate or whatever, uh, to get through. So it's gonna be complicated for a lot of people, especially the elderly that are, I guess you could say, house-ridden or whatever you wanna call it. To do it when you can't afford a smartphone. Uh, let's see, we got the guards handing out the visitor slips again to all the, all the visitors. And we, we had them laminated so they can be cleaned for safety. Which before they was just a piece of paper like this. Um, let's see, we installed time clocks to better let the hours work, which I think's worked out. I think it's worked out great, because some people might stay till fifteen after a certain hour and then, they're used to working, what we can say to them, seven-three, and they work seven-three fifteen. Well, they should get paid for that fifteen minutes. And not sending them timesheets, because they could forget, not saying they would do an intensive thing, but they could forget they left early one day, um, like thirty minutes early, like two weeks ago, because we're on a two-week schedule. This keeps track of it better. Let's see, we changed the pay period, better keep track of payroll. We changed it from Wednesday to a Tuesday, um, because these go into the bank, to do the direct deposit and everything, a day, a day earlier. So it was going in on Wednesday, and they were not working yet on Wednesday, so that was, that's to make sure they get paid for the hours right, and all that. Okay, the next thing was, we installed a vending machine at the pool, how's that going?
Good.
Okay, we got a vending machine out there that we make money off of. It's come, once it pays for itself, then all of, all of it'll be for us. So, it's not much, but it's ours. It's not Pepsi's, it's not Coke's, anybody's like that. And if it goes, if it stays going good, and if people request it, we may have put one down at the tennis courts for us. We're talking about the horsey pets, they're right. Possibly putting like other ones out, other ones out of those two places. We've not dismissed that, it could be water and just trunks or something, but we haven't forgot about that as well. Let's see, we started forcing the no SUV and truck parking in front of clubhouse in the front row, except for the handicap spots down on that very end. I would've changed that, of course, since then, and put golf cart only parking in the front row out here. That way people walking from the back can easily see if cars are coming down Hampton here. Or also, there's nobody really backing out into the street in traffic, especially if a car backs out of space like it used to be. Took care of that, and appreciate Vince doing that, because he painted the, the lines and the um, park. And of course, we knew three spots, a motorcycle too as well, right?
Uh, there, I think there's four. I think I did four, two on one end, two on the other.
Okay, and then we, of course, everybody knows, they've seen it, and we took over the way the news and views is printed. And started um, charging the advertisers ourselves, and they spent that money. I think we've had a report on all that before. But of course, now we've learned that, of course, everything goes up, the papers, paper's gone up, and things like that, we still are going to make money off the news and views. And we still have control over, over the what's in it. Because before we did not have control over everything that was in it, because they put advertising in it that was not, that we didn't know about. Or they used fillers, and maybe they wasted its space, but, because they used too many fillers on certain things. Uh, let's see, okay, we repaired the parking lot, the tree was taken down, uh, which was over there in that corner, where next to the T over. And asphalt was it, and we had an option to like cement it, and we didn't, because uh, it was about the same price, so uh, we just made it look asphalt and be like everything else asphalted up. Let's see, the next thing is hired a CPO to do, CPA to do quarterly reports. We've actually done that. There's a CPA gonna look at, it's been brought up at meetings, but it's already been done. We've got, uh, we've hired somebody to do that, do that report. So, let's see, the next thing on there, the administrative office is doing the, is taking care of the new resident pack. What you hear that the unit reps do, I asked a while ago about that, as well. The unit reps are giving, are giving a property sheet, it's got the name, the phone number, and the address on it. The unit rep goes through the home, um, and introduces herself and this kind of thing. And then when the person comes in to get their barcode, the administrative office makes an appointment with the resident to get a new resident packet, which tells them the rules, regulations, that has the ACC application in there as well. It has the rules and regulations of what's supposed to be built, what can't be built. So, they are still doing that. They usually do that ten-thirty or two-thirty in the afternoon. Let's see. Okay, the next thing is, we had the seminar line painted on, which is correct. Then we, because we had questions last year about um, certain things having to do with the ballot box. Uh, we, well, I decided along with Manny that we'd solve that problem. And we just bought a new ballot box, it looks like a, if anybody's seen it down there in the office, it's set around the lobby, because right now we're having the ballots for the, the members of the board. So, the new members of the board. And it's like a post office mailbox with the chute and all that you see probably at, more like at a, where you drive up to a, a box outside the post office itself. Because it don't have the thing behind it on the other side, where you can pull it over, open to stick a lever in that way, so it's got the chute that's sticking down to them. Okay, we ordered a new, we ordered new code enforcement signs for the truck and car. There's actually a set, the car's sitting in the office. Uh, the reason they're not on there, and I've got that question a lot, it's because we were most likely gonna trade the car the first of this year anyway. So there's no point in paying two thousand dollars, which I then got the price of, to take the code enforcement signs off the car. Because those are heat sealed on there, or I mean, sealed on there, so they're not just pull-offs. They have to be done with somebody with a heat, and you gotta move the uh, the adhesive as well. So uh, that's why it's not been done. So uh, if somebody asks, asks why, that's the reason. Because it will be, will say code enforcement on them and not security. Uh, let's see, we had planned, this last thing, we had planned to get a free inspection of all street signs and street markings by the county. But they sent that letter saying they could not do it, so they have a manpower. Because what, twenty-six miles of roads in here? I believe it is, so uh, they said they couldn't do it, so we'd have to get, if we wanted to go that way, we'd have to get a private firm to certify the, the street signs and stuff. And, and we don't have any information as far as how much something like that costs. That's what the advisor committee is getting, is getting that information, so there was really nothing to report. So that's the reason that um, I got accused of like, they're only telling me the recommendations, well, guess what, they're only doing research. So then, it's not like they got a recommendation. So uh, there's nothing to tell other board members or anyone else yet. Um, let's see, okay, the project we're working on was more golf cart parking. I'm gonna tell you, we took care of that. I've got resumes for the, for the rules and regulations committee. I don't know, because I'm not really getting much cooperation from the other board members, believe it or not. Which does anybody's been to a meeting over the last year? You've noticed that they wanna do things that, you'll hear that they'll do things, they say, they're saying is, I'm gonna do things the way it used to be. They don't wanna make changes, they don't want to entertain any ideas for changes on anything. That's the philosophy, well, I've heard it more times, you can imagine. Well, I don't wanna do this, because we've been doing it like this fifteen years as well. We're in two thousand twenty-two now. So uh, why, why don't you entertain any ideas different? So there's certain things we can't entertain, but there is things we should be able to listen to. And I believe that we should, we should listen to every aspect, because my history is, I was using the grocery business. And I ran grocery stores for ninety to ninety-seven. And I had a young man when I first took it over in, and I'll say probably ninety-two or so. Uh, it was for Walmart and all the other places, started using plastic pallets to shift the prey on, like the groceries and stuff. So he said, he said, I've seen this idea, it costs about this much per pallet, way more than what a wood pallet costs, why don't we use them to save money? So we looked into, ended up saving, saving hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, because we could reuse the pallets, and we gave the guy a uh, we paid, gave him a scholarship to college. So, and he was eighteen years old, he was afraid to approach anybody. But I listened to his idea, and I thought it was a good one, and I said, we'll try. So uh, everybody has good ideas in here, or uh, we've gotta entertain those ideas. And some things we can't do, because of things that, you know, might be a good idea and we go with that. Let's see, okay, I've got down here, we're looking for a new program to replace access to, to the gate. We're still looking for that. Because like I said, access, um, let's see, the gates need replacing, we don't have the parks nowhere anymore. I think we have one estimate so far, because I think that's the only place that, that's the only place it doesn't run here. We need you centrally putting in the pavement. And I'll say, three estimates, but there's only one company doing it, and what are we supposed to? So it'd be hard to get three estimates. I think we have the same deal with the, with the tennis court, right? There's only so many people, we had to do it at the time, did it, Florida courts and somebody.
Well, when you, when you get into that, that specialty areas, you know, like uh, like that would be a special area, the pool. We only had one bid for the pool. Um, we had, I had three bids for the tennis court, but um, two of them actually had, were coming out of Sarasota, the other one was local. Um, but uh, you get into those, those specialty items like that, uh, you know, that's, that's board discretion.
So um, let's see, for this year, the only thing I can think of that we've probably got going on project-wise, because we finished the rift, of course, and Vince gave a report on that last night. That, the only thing I can think of would be the extra vehicle, I mean the vehicle. The, the pool needs to be fixed in the filter area, right? Okay, it's got a crack in the cement there, so that's, need to be fixed sometime for another this year. Had that tractor came in for?
Yes.
Okay, the tractors here from, that we approved a few months back for maintenance. Let's see, that's about all I have on the sheet so far. Is there anything else, oh, we've been working on the, the flooding issue, the drain pipe, certain areas in here, as like, the pocket goes in the ground between the streets and goes through the retention pump. Some of those have been cut, um, and filled in with dirt, especially the one out here on, you see the orange cones out on the yacht, and then if you look close enough, down through the houses over there, you'll see them in the backyard where a clean-out pit is. That, that pit, most of that dirt in the next house, has got dirt in it. So that fight, the water backs up on there, of course it don't drain. So it backs up on the street when it does rain, that's why we got a problem with the yacht. We're also working on uh, for the roads crowned.
Do you have?
On the head and up there, it's piles up, cars drive through it, water splashes in a person's yard, and then runs down the hill, and then runs down the hill, and then water, I mean sand and all, goes in the guy's yard. So uh, it's not worth fixing his drainage problem like his personal problem. It's our person, our problem, we're the ones that crown the road to make it do that. So the, we need a problem, we're putting in a little French drain right there. Maybe that'll solve the amount of water that comes back out on the street. Uh, let's see, I'm trying to think what else. I haven't done a town hall in six weeks, so I don't, can't remember what else it is right now. Let's see, we're still looking volunteers for committees. I think the ACC committee still needs a few people on it as well. What else would you, um, can't think of anything else with that. I know the ballots are out now for the, for the board members. We'll probably, we'll probably, probably see some amendments to the bylaws on the, the budget collection later on this year. I'm gonna start doing these town hall meetings to tell people if it's good, bad, rough. I mean, I don't mind teaching everyone to hide anything from anybody. So uh, uh, we'll be parlaying on this year, I'm sure, and we'll agree with maybe that most likely we're gonna have to go, go up with assessments again next year to cover the labor rate as well. Um, because there's no way that what is now is going to pay fifteen dollars an hour in five years. So, um, or three years, whenever that is. So, um, anyway, uh, that's about all, all we've done so far. And that was, that was quite a bit considering that, that what we've been faced with, 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 um, some board members don't, don't even want to have this. They don't even want to have, have town hall meetings as well. Uh, I don't know why they don't want the residents to know what's going on here, but, um, that just seems strange to me. Um, let's see, what else? If, um, if my, all of the questions anybody has, um, I will say that the one thing about the, just so it's out there, there's a possibility that we may not get hardly anything for the car. Because the car has major issues right now, the small car does, mechanical. And so I don't know if we'll get any money as trading on it or not, so, um, but I want the best deal for whatever we get. All that deal we got last year, just to keep people know that we spent thirty-five thousand for that truck. That truck has a lifetime mechanical warranty. It gets about three times gas mileage that that little white car does, just so people know that. Um, but I still, I, I would like to see us get something like a, I won't say Chevrolet or Ford. I'd rather see us get like a, like a Toyota Corolla or something like that. It's gonna get about thirty-five, forty miles a gallon. Uh, because we, we know gas prices are low. So anybody got a question out here? Yes.
Um, I have a question about the advisory committee. I talked to people about it because of the, 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 you know, most of the committees on there.
Well, typically there's five people on a committee, about the maximum.
Okay, so how do I, can I tell my community? Because I think they need more information. And I talked to them about what they have, the information they need from the board. And, uh, there's other ideas out there that they have to handle. They need to continue operations to make sure that I know how I can help.
If he wants to put, I, I think it's up to him with, or that committee itself to like, if they got a, if they got open on there, they, they want to put more people on if they can. And I don't think there's a limit on it.
Yes, my thought is, well, why not have more people? And that besides maybe a government information and then we can carry it. Also, I liked what you had last night. And I know we talked about technical issues at the other meetings. And I just think until we have a cohesive board, that, look, I don't know if you guys can be effective in trying to commit three, five, four committees. I was kind of disconcerted because I saw, I know there's people here that have an issue. And I know it isn't going to work, but nobody knew what was going on. And nobody said, "Well, we're having a storm because we don't have such a good staff." So I was kind of, um,
Well, they were out sick.
I'm sorry?
They were, the two of them were, um,
I know, but nobody knew what was going on. Nobody said, nobody said, "Okay, here's what's going on. We're having a forum instead of an actual meeting."
So my, the issue is that nobody in as many people that were here did not have an idea what was going on. So I just wish somebody had said, "Here's what's going on," you know? And I agree with the transparency and I think you guys are doing a great job. But again, I think the board needs to be more cohesive than some, someone, so.
Well, I can address that issue. Um, they were out sick last night and the Australians were out sick. I did not know that they were out sick till I walked through the door. So I did not know that personally myself. But as far as the cohesion goes, or it's, I will say that that is not, that has been a problem since, since I was elected. Um, there was problems before with the previous board. Uh, there was a lot of things that was not told to the residents then. Uh, people didn't like me running because I was going to expose all that and still do. Um, they, from the beginning, they didn't like me doing town hall meetings. They said that, uh, I was spreading lies. And I keep trying to figure out, some of the stuff I've heard, I try to figure out, well, words are a lot. Words are the, and they're like, they're like nitpicking words. Also, I've heard, heard the rumor in the past that, that one board member tries to take over all the time. Well, that was like, yeah, the board meeting is a possibility of trying to do that. But behind the scenes stuff, most of the stuff I'm doing, because I'm the one that's there thirty-five hours a week, basically at the office or I'm up here. And basically going out to people's houses, they got a problem with the flood. If they got, if something's wrong with the street or whatever in front of their house, I'm outside of here. I'm looking, checking the making ability to see if, uh, they're doing something with, down there on the yacht. I'm also checking the retention ponds as well. Um, but I know, I know what you're talking about. And the email I got yesterday from one of them, one of the board members, I'll say, that was completely wrong. And, um, they made it out like I'd signed the paper and they were going to go talk to the attorney about that. Well, that caused conflict. If they would have asked me ahead of time, and they say that I did not, I did not keep them informed. Well, the problem I have is, is that, is if I'm here doing most of the stuff, or like I know what's going on most of the places, and then like up here, something's going on here, they want to be informed of that. Well, I'm already spending thirty-five hours up here a week. And I don't tell it to them, they, they can know that if they, if they want to. I spend thirty-five hours, why should I do all the work? Or, or involved in all the stuff? And then turn around and, you know, try to track you down to get you informed? When you volunteer to run for the board, you should be where you want to know what's going on and contacting me if there's anything new going on or seeing when a board meeting is, or seeing when a committee meeting is. That should be where you say, okay, it's so-and-so meeting on Wednesday or Tuesday or Monday or wherever it is. If you want to know the information, it shouldn't be my thing to where I gotta go spend all day trying to track them down and tell you when a meeting is. That's not, you volunteered for the board, to run for the board. You should make that part of your responsibility because you answer to the people. Answer to the people. I don't have time to answer to just one particular person. I gotta answer to the residents in, in the park. So I know what you're talking about with the cohesionness. I think that the new board coming in, and Ann's, Ann will be on that. Leo and, um, Ken Duncan and Larry. Most of that stuff we've talked about already, over and over again, about different things. And we agree philosophy-wise on a lot of things. That, uh, I think it's gonna be totally different. I think the cohesionness is gonna be there. Um, I think some things that were started out wrong was basically people talk that, well, the first thing was I got attacked when I had the ortho stroke. I was told that, well, I can't do it. And it was out there that I had a people mind and all this kind of stuff. And then, uh, then I find out, trying to include directors in things. Then I found out they've gone after Carol's lives. And they disputed the election results. They don't think, they don't realize that, that people want to change. And it was voted seven hundred and some votes. Well, seven forty-two is what I got. So people wanted to, residents wanted to change. Well, they couldn't live with that. They thought they deserved to be back on the board. They thought they did a good job, but they was, they wasn't transparent last year, year before last. So they didn't deserve to be back on. And then the ones that were still left on there couldn't, they couldn't handle being defeated by that or people wanting to change. So they fought anything I wanted to change. So that's why I was attacked to, all year long about different things and different meetings. So of course I can't, I can't change their culture. Because they're already sitting in waves with, with what they, what they want and what they believe. Uh, and I look at it like I answer to y'all, I do not answer to them. So that's kind of the way I've looked at it. And also, it's kind of hard to leave them in the loop when they, they say things like they want to be, they're left out. Well, it's kind of hard, it's, it's gonna be hard to put them in the loop when there are no one who's stabbing you, stabbing you in the back the whole, the whole time. If, if things wasn't, they were in the loop, I considered till the middle of July. When I received a, when Mike Long did the one on the roof, got a phone call from a resident that pretended to be, I'll say pretended. I don't know, he took it as they was part of the original board. Didn't say they pretended, so they can't say that to me. Well, I contacted the board members. They said that the person, they didn't say the person apologized or anything. I said, "That was just wrong what they did." Um, then a few weeks later, I found out that board members signed off on trying to fight the election. The whole time they're being nice and everything behind, in front to my face, but yet there's, they're disputing election results. Well, what am I supposed to do? Am I supposed to look, say, be nice and like, and take it? Of course not, because I know what, what it was. So you got that and then you got the things that happened with the, uh, you got board members that fought the mask mandate. I think that was a good idea at the time. And they found a way around that as well. Um, and now we see that, uh, I'll say that, that come up with. Well, I think they should have went and told the people that they were at their risk and they didn't do it. So they're trying to put the blame back on me. So that's what it is. If you don't have to, I'll admit, I made a mistake. I apologize if I made a mistake. But there's certain board members that you'll never get an apology from. They're always right. And they don't listen to anything that anybody says. They won't take no ideas they got. And I found out in the last six weeks, basically, that some of the ideas that I got reported on, they all agreed with when I first came on, or most of them agreed with. Now they're turning things around and they don't agree with it now. Because I think that email I got last night is a prime example. They knew about the advisory committee. They knew what the advisory committee did, does. They sat in on meetings with the advisory committee. They knew it was all to get just information. They don't tell us what we're going to do. They just say, "Okay, it's a recommendation. It's an idea." But yet, I get that saying, "I should have told them about that." I said, "You sat in on meetings on it." It just don't make no sense. So constantly there's stuff going on that is, like, instead of talking to you, asking you a question, they, well, let's see, maybe I can change the words on this a little bit around to suit my, my narrative specifically. And that's where they get, they start using the SOPs, they bring them up, uh, and things like that, that, uh, they'll twist around and just found something today that's come up. Well, on it today is a great example. They spend more time trying to nitpick, really nitpick things instead of, "Oh, what's out here?" I mean, like, most people, like I said along, you know, they only care about getting in the gate. They only care about paying their assessment. They only care about using the pool, making sure the cub last clean, making sure that employees do what they're supposed to do up here. They don't care about certain things, whether it's, whether it's SOPs or a guideline anyway. They don't care about it being precisely like that. It's the ones that do that are the ones that cause problems because they're trying, you spend all your time trying to decipher what they wrote on the email, because they sent something that's not, that's, they changed the wording just a little bit or took out a word. Um, because I found something today that was, that was a long question. It's like, "Well, why did you do this?" Well, we're looking, one board's missing. So it's things like, it's things like that. And that wastes time, wastes Carol's time, wastes Flynn's time. It's, it's, it's like they are looking for a gotcha moment. And that's what most of them have done over the last year. They look for people to pat them on the back, but yet they want to apologize if they do something wrong. I'll never get apologies for that yesterday. Like I did not get apologies for the putting mask mandate in place. They knew they switched it from, uh, this is what I got. The first thing I put in place, put it in place. They went around and told residents. They called and they wanted, they wanted to argue about it, did more in place. And then the Fergenex Wednesday night meeting, which was that week, they did that on Monday. Wednesday night, they're telling people, "Well, you should have, you should have put it in place sooner." So you can't win with some of them. They wanna, they want, they want rules to apply. It's okay when it fits, well, I'll say, I'll say, they want things to fit them when it fits their, when they're going to get credit for it. And they say, "All that they're for is for the residents." They are not for the residents. They're looking for the pat on the back. So I'm surprised I went on rambling about that. That's, that's his, and I'll put up with a lot of stuff from the last year.
Thank you. That was quite the answer. I appreciate it. And I just hope for, uh, maybe in the future, everybody will come together as a group and we can do better for our community. Thanks.
Uh, there's, Jerry's got a couple of statements online. Um, since, she says, "Since we already have one new truck, is it really necessary in cost effect to have another truck? Would it be less experienced, less expensive, smaller vehicle to be a better choice at this point?" And, and she wants to clarify, is there still a health committee in place? And so we're still be getting updates?
Okay, the answer to her question is, I agree with Anna when we talked about it. That's the next field, which should be a car. So, um, so no, I don't plan on it being, whether they want a truck or not. I think it should be, I think it should be a car, it should be something fuel efficient. And it probably should be used by, I'll say honestly, it should be used by, by the person in code enforcement like Tim and Peter, the one at Prime Road checks the houses for the violations as far as during the day goes. And, uh, and that kind of thing. Because one thing I did notice today, and I will tell you, and I talked to Peter about it earlier, that he checked the houses today. That he left here, left the office and he went, turned left and went down Country Club, I mean, went down a brick and board. Always check that one house and turn around and come back. Well, that could have been done in a patrol that's going up and down the streets or whatever. It didn't have to make a special trip over or do that. So to me, that was an unnecessary trip. So that's why I say it needs to be a small car that gets the gas pollution. And for them to, for them to do their running, but not like that. Um, the other, what was the other question?
Health committee.
Okay, the health committee is no longer, as far as I know, it's no longer in place. It will maybe put back in place when there's other, other issues. But right now, um, But right now, um, I'm thinking, uh, my personal, as most people have gotten the vaccine, most people's got the booster that are in here. Um, so I'm not real sure if they need to come back, because we're not going to close anything down. And I guess I'll take the blame for that. So if, uh, because I don't see anything else being closed down right now.
And, uh, Mr. Bennett, uh, Mr.? Mr. Bennett asked, uh, "Why don't you name the members who, who know you, who is responsible?" As far as the board members go?
Hmm, well, I thought about that before I walked in the door here. If it came, if the question came by. Well, I will say that out of, out of six, I will say that if you have a question, or three quarters you have, well, let's take that back. I'll say you got a question of at least three or four of the six that could be, that could be on that list at one time or another. I will not name names, because I'm not going to like, get a complaint as I did last year. There was complaints made about me, and I said stuff during the meeting and I'm naming names. But I've got proof that that really happened. Just like right now, I got proof on my phone, I got an email from a board member that's taking me, says they're gonna call the attorney on me, uh, over this, over signing the paper that I know I didn't sign. So, uh, there is no paper. They just causing trouble and they sent it to other board members as well. So the other board members think that person knows that I signed the paper, which I didn't. So they're just starting the trouble and the rip with the other ones against me. So, um, uh, needless to say, um, there's other things I've found out that, uh, that I'll say done, I've kept under, that's been kept under rap, under wraps, because it happened years ago. And I'm gonna leave it alone, because we're supposed to move on and change the culture. But yet, but yet, the things keep going on, they keep bringing this stuff up. So, uh, um, that was my point with the, with the person that did what they did back, back in July. I, I made the comment, I said, "These are going to escalate, or it's going to de-escalate." It turned around escalating. Then I found out the next week that even, even board members sat here, they signed off on a paper disputing my, my election. Well, how am I gonna be cautious when I know this person thinks that I don't deserve to be on the board? Of course I'm gonna be, I'm not gonna be in favor of them, because they've been basically trying to get rid of me and Carol before, during the months be- before that. So they're scheming them like that, so I'm not gonna be your best friend when you do that. Because they're, if they try to get rid of me, or try to get rid of Carol, or whatever, who's gonna run the place? That puts in more chaos than it was before. And that's exactly what it'd be. And I will say another thing that's happened, that, the thing I've seen here is that throughout the last while is, I call it a knee-jerk reaction. What I've found is that there are some people that, even on the board, that have a knee-jerk reaction to something. They don't get all the facts first, and they jump to conclusions right away. And I'll say, if I would have listened to them as far as, or agreed with them, then right now, I'll say, four people would not be working here. Because, and I can even say this to Vince, I said, "Vince, if I had listened to everybody, Vince wouldn't be here, Greg wouldn't be here, Carol wouldn't be here, and Lynn wouldn't be here." If I went to a knee-jerk reaction on everything. And that's the primary reason that I'm sitting here today, is because the first of this week, the, um, especially when I saw that email. And I said, "That was a knee-jerk reaction." That was just like the, um, Cake Century thing, where people thought we'd done, put Cake Century in place and hadn't had a hearing about it, or our demonstration or anything. And it's like, it's like, gee, Williams, that's just, that's why I need to stay. That's why if somebody's, somebody's looked at things and they know my personal situation, and they've asked questions about, "Well, am I gonna, was it on stage, or I was gonna finish this tournament," or whatever, they worried about my health or whatever, I'm gonna say resoundly, yes, I'm gonna stay, stay. So I've been told, "Well, I'm glad to have you back." And I said, "Well, I can't, I can't let, even though there are certain things that I don't agree with in my personal life, but I can't see letting them destroy something, going back to a old way of doing things, uh, that's going to, it's like, I've looked at things and I'm like, um, over the past six weeks, I've seen things that go back to like, the way things used to be. Nobody volunteered to do any town hall meeting. Nobody volunteered to keep, keep the residents informed on things. Um, they would just, they would just let this just appear. And to me, that's showing me exactly how supportive they were. So if I, if I burned a bridge, I burned the bridge, because they burned it with me. So, um, anyway, I don't, I'm not going to name the names, because you see, you don't see them here. So that tells you a great deal right there. And that also tells you about some of the, the social committee and some of the things like that, and when on with that, they don't volunteer for that. Uh, and you'll see support some of the events, you don't see the support some of the events either. As well, like, certain things go on, some of them don't show up with that. So, uh, that's some of them. So, uh, um, so that's where, that's where I'm dealt with that. I'm not gonna answer, I'm not gonna say the names, I know who they are. Um, uh, let's just say, if you look back through the, through the videos and, uh, the board meetings, and you look through the other stuff, you'll see what, you'll see which ones it is, if you want to look. So, uh, anyway, I'm not going to name, name them outright, names, names. Um, so, anybody else got a question?
Jerry, I have a statement, not a question. Um, I moved in here three and a half months ago, and I read all those, the rules and regulations of the community. And you already touched on both of these issues, but the speeding on the Boulevard is outrageous. Fifty, sixty miles an hour. I wish I could hide behind a tree with one of the guns, the guns that the cops use, because I'd catch everybody. Not only the cars, the motorcycles, and not only the motorcycles, but the people that are hired to do, you know, business in here, plumbers and things like that. Unbelievable. I understand when the fire department and the ambulance come in, there's an emergency, they need to speed through. But the rest of them, and the second issue is parking on the street. There's a car that parks on the Boulevard, he's there all day, he's all, all night. And, um, you know, you always have to watch out to go around him, you know what I mean? And I can give you the address, it's one four nine four eight.
Okay.
And he's out there all the time, it's an SUV, I believe.
Okay.
And, um, you know, I, I still haven't gotten the key to the pool, so I don't know how I go about doing that.
Pull pass?
Excuse me?
The pull pass?
Yeah.
Just go to the office.
Okay.
And they'll give you a pull pass.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're aware of that, um, the speeding issue on Brookridge Boulevard and other places in here. Um, we, we have talked about that. We, some people have been saying, "Deal with it, it's been like that for, I've heard forty years." Uh, that, um, you, you're right. Um, that, uh, some, you'll see something in the next few weeks, once, that once, um, we're gonna try something. And I'll take that for that as well. Um, what we're gonna do is, we're going to train a floater that's gonna be able to run the, the laser. That person's gonna do nothing but traffic violations. It's gonna do it for a six week, for a six week period, we're gonna see how it goes.
You can train me, Jerry, because I worked for an attorney for twenty years, I do everything by the book.
So how we're going to, most people say that we can't shoot the car from the back. I mean, we have to shoot the car from the back to get the license. Well, that's not technically true. We are gonna shoot it from the back, but we're also gonna shoot it from the front. So we're gonna shoot it coming towards you, and then when it passes, we're shooting the tag. So if it's speeding, when it's going towards you at forty-five miles an hour, and it's slowed down to thirty when it goes by you, you're going to be able to tell, obviously, because you're not getting it from exactly head-on shot, from facing exactly forward, because they'll probably be sitting in the medium, or sitting on the side street, that you'll be able to tell that the same car that was doing, that was shot from the front doing forty-five is the same car that passed on twenty-five, or twenty, or thirty. So you will know, know that. And their primary goal is do it for six weeks, to get, to get us a report, if, how many people it is, um, and everything that one. And at least we're doing, at least we're doing something. I know other things cost, like, putting the, like, where that pull behind little trailer with the, that says slow down and has your speed and whatever that the county has, we was thinking about getting one of those as well. But, uh, we got, we're, she's gonna be trying to use the, I'm gonna say she, I thought it was gonna be she. Um, it's going to be trained to run nothing but the laser gun. And we're gonna see how it works with the speed first. And if it's successful with that, then we're going to, I can say this, uh, that, um, her focus after that will be the floater stop, stop signs. That's gonna be the second issue. Uh, but first, we want to get on the speed part.
Jerry, I'm up every morning at two AM, and from about four-thirty to seven-thirty, eight o'clock, same thing. This speeding through there, trying to get out of here.
Yeah, we've got, I've got examples myself, like I said last night. I sat here one day, and I pulled up Brookridge Boulevard, to Brookridge Central right there. And I watched a car come down Brookridge Central that was in the left, that was in the right lane, well, left and facing the car shack. So I knew it was a resident. They come through like, come through the stop sign right there, didn't stop, they went on the Boulevard. And they headed up toward the road that runs parallel to the Boulevard, which is in the corner, close to where Spectre is. What's the name of that? It, it, I don't know what the name of that road is. But anyway, um, I was gonna turn to the guy at the guard shack. And I pulled in behind him, going straight, like going toward the RV compound. And I never did catch him. And I will admit, I was going over thirty miles an hour, because I was trying to see where they're leading. And I never did catch him. And they turned and went down to a street on the left there, before you get to Spectre, where it runs off the bull.
Men more?
No, whatever that street is, that, in the curve that runs, not really parallel, it runs at an angle. Yeah, okay, that's it. And they pulled in the driveway up there on Dickens. And of course, it was fairly dark, I was able to see the tail lights. So I seen them turn off, because I didn't get close enough to get, see the tag or anything. And like I said, they was probably doing, I don't know, they was probably doing fifty or sixty at least. And, uh, um, went down there, and I slowed down, and I waited for them to get out of the car. I kept waiting for them to get out, because I wanted to see who it was. And it was the actual resident. There was not no young kid, nothing like that. Um, it was a, it was a couple, and I, I slowed down enough to look at the, and I saw the barcode on the side of the car. So I knew they, I knew it was not a guest, it was a resident. And, and like I said, they were doing fifty-five or sixty at least. Because I never did catch them at forty-five, so I knew they were doing more than forty-five. And I admit, I did that to see where they was at. That's what happens most of the time, they run that stop sign, if they don't turn on Country Club, they keep going down Brookridge Boulevard. And they know, they think that you can't shoot, that you can only shoot the car from behind, so they know they're not gonna get stopped, so they do it. Um, and that's just, that's just common, that's what's gonna happen.
Jerry, when they do the six-week trial, and they also do on Street Paul as well as Brookridge Boulevard?
Yes, there's gonna be, there's gonna be, uh, they'll probably be out Brookridge Boulevard most of the time. They'll probably be on Country Club, they're gonna probably be on Spectre, because we know several people that are speeding on Spectre, they come, they come from Spectre that actually speeds. Um, probably gonna be on Rialto as well, because our main roads, our main roads that we're gonna, gonna get certified first anyway, was going to be Brookridge Boulevard, Rialto, um, Spectre, let's see, and Country Club. Those, I guess that's five, right? There's four or five ways we're gonna get certified first, if we, if we've done the certification. So, yeah, that's what's gonna be, and Country Club is gonna be.
Yeah, Mr. Bennett wants to know if, if the radar gun is calibrated to law enforcement standards.
Now, that I, that I can't tell you on that part. Um, I don't know, so I'd have to check that out, of course.
Okay.
And if it does get, if it's calibrated to law enforcement standards, then I will welcome somebody to challenge it, because we are private roads.
That's right, yeah. And, uh, Jerry, Jerry Krep wants to thank you, uh, very much for pushing this through.
So, and just, so, so you be aware, um, as I said before, I've got resumes for a rules and regulations committee to look at the rules and regulations. Well, at this point in time, I would like to put the committee together, but, I mean, you know, it'd afford me, but I know they will not vote for this. So, um, because there's certain people on the board that thinks that we don't have a problem. Um, so, uh, anyway.
It's a problem, Jerry, because there's people that are walking dogs on that street. There's other people that are getting their mail out of the mailbox on that street.
Mm-hmm.
And if they're not paying attention to who's riding down the road so quickly, you know?
That's right, and there's other-
An accident ready to happen.
That's right, there's, there's other rules and regulations in here that, I mean, that, I don't have them in front of me, but there is a lot of rules and regulations that, not just the speeding, some of the speeding issues, but there's other rules and regulations that I'll say have been passed down through the years, that, um, that somebody's wanted, that not the whole community wanted. I will say that to you right away, because I've found out things that, um, then I just, then, that would shock you sometimes. So, uh, in the past year, I've found out things that, um, that, um, just been, the excuse has been that, "Well, that's always, we don't have this problem." Right, okay. Tell me that when I get on Country Club, I may get on, uh, well, they tell me that with the speeding problem, but it's kind of hard to do when you get on Brookridge Boulevard, and you stay in that right lane, and you do thirty miles an hour to the curb, and it says twenty, and you go around the curb at twenty, and you, you set your speed at thirty, or you're doing about thirty all the way down through there, and next thing you know, you're getting passed by people that's still waiting up here on, that you saw at the end of Brookridge Central Boulevard- saw at the end of Brookridge Central Boulevard, and they turn right on Brookridge Boulevard, and you're in front of them, and they pass you, and you know you're doing thirty, so you know they're going faster than you. So, they can't, nobody tell me there's not a speeding problem in, cause I get, I get passed a lot of times, I go to the RV compound, I leave the office, and go to the RV compound. Well, usually, I pull out, of course, pull out in the right lane, in the guard shack, you've got people coming through the guard shack, and they'll come through the, the resident lane. And I'll stop, stop signing it, at the end of Brookridge Central. I turn right, they turn right, they don't turn on, leave on Country Club, they stay on Brookridge Boulevard. And before I get to the RV compound, to turn in there, they pass me, so they're going faster than me. So, it's obviously that they're speeding. So, nobody can tell me no different, there's not a problem here. And as I said yesterday, we had a town hall meeting last year, that only had over a hundred people show up for, and the prompt, the main topic was speeding. It's been asked at every meeting, every board meeting, every, almost every town hall meeting, there's been comments about speeding, so I, I know it's an issue. If it wasn't an issue, we wouldn't be talking about it. So, um, and then sometimes, sometimes it's crazy to the others, and, uh, we'll take an example, um, that I went out to Spectre, way out to the very end of the Boulevard, and I was coming back. And I went out there looking at, I guess I must've been looking at the retention spot out there, to see if there's any trash in one of the retention spots. And it was kinda late in the afternoon, and I was coming back up Brookridge Boulevard, and I got to Midmore, and there's that curve that comes from this between the RV compound and Midmore. A car came around that curve going so fast, that they basically come off the ground, that's how fast they were going, cause there's a little highway. And they almost wrecked in the median, and she went from the, whoever the driver was, went from the right lane to the left lane. And I turned around in that turnaround spot. And, uh, I went down there, and I, I never did catch them, cause they were faster than me, but it was dark enough where they had to use their lights. So, uh, or you could see the brake lights come on, and, uh, they turned in the house. And I stopped, and it was, I don't know if they had barked it or not, but it was just like, that was crazy. So, uh, so I know what happens. Uh, anybody else got any questions about anything?
Jerry, I have a question. Since the community is so long, how come there's not an exit or exit on the back end? Not an entrance, just an exit?
That was probably done, that was probably when it was built back in the, what, seventies? That, the, uh, the way it was planned down, I guess it was that way, where they wanted one entryway in, and then they didn't wanna have to pay for a second, a second guard shack, and-
But if it was just the exit, they wouldn't have to have a guard shack? Because people that live here have codes on their car.
Well, you gotta remember also, when you, if you don't have a guard shack, or anything like that, except on the back end, back here, a great example is, you've got a problem already with people coming through, the, there's a gate back there as well, that has to stay open during certain hours of school. Well, you have certain people that, that I'll say jumped the fence last year, or come through that gate, that didn't live here, so that's, that's an issue, so it has to be guarded, it has to be, if it wasn't, separate entrances have to be guarded.
Okay, that was just an idea, because I think most of the speeders are the people that live back there, because they have such a long way to go.
So, the developer didn't put it in there? If it was already there, when, when, when they developed the place, then it'd be fine. But in order for us to do that now, another-
Yeah.
Eight bucks, eight bucks a month?
Yeah, it costs a lot of money.
It's why it's not there.
It costs a lot of money, and-
I just thought that would help with the speeding.
Well, probably would, but-
You're only going home. It isn't like you're going to the doctor's or anything, you're going home. Most of these people are retired, right?
Yeah.
Right, we shouldn't be in the hurry.
So, um, also, if, one thing I learned, that they must not have had the money back in that, in that time when it was being developed, cause you notice, you notice that, when you look at the map, and you see the units, which are, which are one through six, but it's minus number five. You gotta remember, number five of this plate was supposed to be where Sunshine-
Spring Ridge.
Yeah, where Sunshine Charm, Charm Circle is, and all that over here, that's supposed to be unit five. So, uh, um-
There are, there are roads leading that way, across, through the golf course, they're right, not through the golf course, because it never, they were never put in, but- Especially in the back, by, down by Scepter and the Boulevard, there's a road, there's a road that leads into there, a cutback, like a, like a driveway, then you got one over on, uh, on Rialto, by number seven there, and then you have the, on the end of the Boulevard, uh, between Elektra and the Boulevard there, there's a gate there.
Yeah, there's a, there's a gate there, I sit and go by it all the time right there. So, yeah, um, um, if you look, and when you study the history, which I've done, studied most, some of the history here, is that when you go back to, a great example is that, I will say, some of the land, say the RV compound, an example, that land next to the RV compound, I saw papers on it, that it sold, that it was originally owned by developers.
Mm-hmm.
And what it sell for, like a hundred dollars for all of it?
Well, that was, that was to put all the, the water treatment, and all that stuff for the community, and all the way around this area, so that's why they went to the county.
Yeah, and it was sold for ridiculously low prices as well, so, so I know that they, they've had problems with that. Also, gotta remember that, um, that there's three acres up there, that has been sold, gotta say that on Midmore. And we're supposed to meet with the guy, I'm assuming, this, sometime this month, he wants to know what, what some ideas are to put, that the community will support. So, I don't know, I thought it should be like a, like maybe a small building that had like, um, that one person leased, I mean, a small family leased it out, or a group, or whatever, and the, the building would be built for like, like a general store type, where you've got like, the old days that you see, H Hardware, that's got a post office in it, or, um, something with the pharmacy in it, and things like that, um, cause he wanted to put something to support, for Brookridge that was supported.
Biggest, the biggest issue is, they don't pay assessments.
Yeah, that's the big thing, cause that property is owned commercial.
And they'll probably want outside people to come in, from the outside.
And that's gonna, that's gonna be the problem, that's gonna be a problem with-
That's why it's, it's never been done before.
Yeah, but, but they, yeah, they, they-
Perfect, it's perfect for me, I live right there.
But, yeah, they bought it. I mean, some guys bought it, and, um, uh, so the-
It's a gold mine, waiting to happen.
So, the ideas have been floated around, or, I've been thought up stuff crazy, like, just to make fun of it, I said something about it, should be, um, maybe a pasta or a, a liquor store.
Well, you put Harry's out of business, you put Harry out of business. Hey, you know what, I'm all for it.
I don't know, it's just, just it's been, it's been funny to think of things that like, like, um, some ideas, but, um-
Jerry?
Yeah.
Can we go home?
Yes, I'm done. I'm done, thank you for coming in.
Can I ask you another question, Jerry?
Yeah.
How do you feel about these people that come in here and buy houses pretty reasonable, and flip them, so they buy them for a hundred, and they flip them for a hundred and seventy in one month?
Nothing you can do about that one thing, cause it's like the market demand, I noticed that, um, say, for example, that-
Capital contributions will solve that too. They buy a house, it's a hundred bucks, no matter who, what, two weeks, month, or if it's ever sold, it's a hundred bucks.
Well, how about if they buy three houses in one month, and sell them all within one month? And they flip them all?
They can only buy five.
Yeah, they can buy, buy five?
You can only own five houses in here. Before, while, there's, there's other people around here that own ten or fifteen-
I mean, but there's a lot of people in here that are on social security, and these guys are kicking ass by-
Well, it's, it's, it's the market demand for it, it's like-
That's being entrepreneur, that's what we're-
It's like, a great example is, I'll, I'll say this, and we'll, we'll, we'll leave on this, is that I myself have looked for like, land outside of here, just, just to see what was out there. And everything around this area is going for at least, a lot's going for at least thirty thousand-
Enough.
On up. So, the prices in Florida are ridiculous for, for housing, the big problem we got is most, when you look, you see rent, the rent most places are, for a one-bedroom apartment is just almost nine hundred, is nine hundred dollars. So, yeah, that, most times, they get it for, uh, a low price here, of course. I mean, we have people in here that like, pass away, I'm sure that people, if you've been on Brookridge Boulevard, going past Brookridge Central, there's a house where the folks have passed away years ago, and it's like two years ago, and the heirs don't wanna do nothing with it. So, it's just sitting there, and I'm sure if we go, when he goes, it's gonna go real cheap, and they're gonna fix it up, and they're gonna turn around, and they're gonna flip it. But, okay, I thank everybody for coming out, uh, I thank you, Ann, for being patient.
I know that's not my forte.
I don't know.
Can we go now?
Yeah.
She's, she's very good. Absolutely.